This conference will now be recorded.
Any questions with regard to any other reports? All right then, let's go to updates on activities, projects, event recaps, community park projects. Mr. Tucker. We have a map here of the community park. All the items that you see here are under engineering. Most of them are waiting a survey to get the actual site locations and then engineering will commence on it, but it's addressing the tennis court, well, the tennis court security system is not waiting for a site survey, but the contractor reports that the locking mechanisms are, we're still waiting to delivery and scheduling of the contractor to come out. Mr. Tucker's may mention that there's 20 some odd people that have already gone to the scheduling software and have registered, though that's, it's not in use to schedule a time because the locks are not in place, but people are discovering that site. A number of areas with regard to poor drainage, you're probably all well aware of them, but those are being advanced by engineering and all those are contingent upon the site survey to start with. We have the playground area improvements. When is that equipment due to arrive?
12/16, the equipment is going to arrive on site and they will start the installation immediately. The pour-in-place fall surface will be done when temperatures allow for it. So just depending on that day of the temperature, it may push it a little bit after the first of the year, but their intention is to install right as it arrives.
Not all that will be coordinated with Christmas in the park. The also the fence project, we have, that bid proposal has been put out. We've received one of three, waiting for two more and we'll be bringing that to council. Do I have any more? Okay, not mentioned on here is the pavilion. The small picnic pavilion near the small playground area.
Yes, it'd be in this area right here.
We already have the layout and designs, but awaiting on-site survey, which will give us more direction as to its best location with regard to drainage. That'll be located. Yes. The bridge crossing on the bottom right. They're looking at a bridge. You want to address that? Mike?
Yes, sir. What we were asked to investigate over there at the tap trail was the continued inundation of the trail with drainage and what we surmise is that the water is migrating down that trench following the sewer line that was installed. And so what we're looking at doing is an underground fridge drain collection system, try to intercept that drainage, take it underneath the trail into the creek, keep it off of the surface. Yes, man.
And Mike, I think she's referring to also further down the actual, like the low-water crossing. We've, we're reviewing the existing plans for the, the one that's already put in place because this one had preliminary plans. So they're resurveying that, looking at the existing plans and we expect something very similar to what's out there.
That's correct.
So the end result is hopefully getting rid of all the algae that's on that walkway as well as up on the north end or the west end of the trails. All right, let's go to the ballpark. Firefield Ballpark. How many have driven out there? Well, lots of changes have happened in a month. We, last week, they started putting up the ADA handrails and that's near completion. So there's, that's from the parking lot. And then we also have handrails that are being installed from the ball field sidewalk area up to the restrooms. Now it's behind those porta-potties where the future permanent restroom facility will be placed. So that's all been coordinated up front, so we're not building a sidewalk that needs to get moved.
Question for you, sir. I saw in the engineering report that you guys have slated $300 plus thousand dollars for 2025 for the restrooms to be put in there. When you are planning on constructing these restrooms, was there going to be an inclusion of air conditioning and also a combination of a concession stand so the HSA can actually have a revenue generating source?
There's no concession stand.
Is that something that we could add into it?
Not while on expense, but that would be, that would be another discussion item to understand. HSA is this separate entity.
Correct, but with that being the city property, we could also lease it out to select baseball tournaments and other organizations beyond HSA that would expect facilities such as this in order for us to be able to do that. So.
That is, that's not what's been in the plan or presented to councils.
Oh, good deal.
And that'd be a future topic.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah. Well, I figure 2025, I'd be getting in line with it ahead of the gun before anything even gets on paper, so we can get that budget adjusted.
It's all already on paper. That budget was accepted. Nonetheless, noted. Send me a note.
Hundred percent. And what worst case, when we do next year's budget, we'll make sure we bring it up then.
So I think that's all that we have to report on parks. Hassett Parkway Construction Project. Here is Hassett Parkway. That is from I-35 to our western city boundaries. The, currently it is, construction has been completed to what is called Station 69. If you notice, it is just on the east side of the learning center. Tech dot and CAG and primarily Tech Dot have determined, and this is due to, I keep mentioning half for many, many months, that utilities still in the right of way have delayed this project significantly. Right now it's more in two years in delay. And Tech Dot, there is no, over a year ago, we started working on recovery plans for this project. And to no avail. So Tech Dot has determined the best course of action, which they have done, is suspending Zachary's contract on this project and suspending this project where it sits right now. The Tech Dot's plan is to, what I've been told as recent with, within the last week, is Hassett Parkway up to Station Next 69, it will be finished out. That means graded, any sidewalks that need to be installed. Seating that'll take place. Barricades will be put at the end of that roadway, which is at Station 69. And that roadway will be open to the public. The subdivisions depending, you know, dependent upon developer completion of that roadway or the tie-in to Hassett Parkway that includes both intermodal that runs between Caraway and Sweetgrass. Did I get that correct? And then also Sweetgrass Boulevard that goes up to Hassett Parkway. The developer's responsible for making those tie-ins. It looks like it might be 100-foot or so of concrete work to make those tie-ins, but that will be available to all those residents to quick access to Hassett Parkway and go to I-35 and 170. Tech Dot's intention is to in approximately a year and a half, to relet this contract for the remainder of the project. Because the project is keeping the contractor on board, is suffering great amount of penalties. I do want to report that the city of Hassett is not subject to any of them. That's been confirmed last week in the meeting. Mr. Anderson was there as well. All of that will be borne by North Central Texas Council, Governor, and/or Tech Dot. Yes. Correct. Now the, with regard to that is, now they have one design on Hassett Parkway, one approved design, and all of that is at grade. And the topic of a bridge had been brought up, City of Hassett, I brought up more than two years ago. And that's been a point of contention is the word, asking for verification with regard to site breaking distance analysis because it's a very aggressive downslope going right into 156. So that is yet to be resolved, but any change that I have been, have informed both Tech Dot and CAG, that any change in the current approved design must be presented to this city council, to the governing body of Hassett, Texas, and be approved before anything can be considered for a change. And they are aware of it. I'm not ma, asking them to make a change. I did. Your green button will light up on the right. So the early on, Hassett asked for a bridge, you know, more than three years ago, the shooting and six months or so after I took office, I'm calling up, where's this bridge? Because it was announced the bridge was going to be built. Now, at that time, the bridge was as I understand it at that time, was across the tracks, 156 and Schoolhouse Road. And I did let CAG know that the city of Hassett needed a bridge. And nonetheless, two years later, a, on that call, a, a profile was submitted and that's the profile over the railroad tracks only. Now the, you know, I understand that it's very expensive, but this is a regional roadway serving primarily Fort Worth residents and North Tarrant County residents, let alone, you know, city of Hassett. But in looking at that bridge, the, and I've showed it to you before, is the analysis of that in what if there are people stopped at the, at a red light on Abendale Hassett Road at 156, or there's a queue of cars that build up? The ASHTO criteria, that is the standard by which all bridges, all folks, and Tech Dot determine site breaking distance analysis. Yes, there are sufficient there is sufficient room to stop if there's no cars stopped. If there's no queue of cars. When you introduce a queue of cars and I, my analysis that I submitted to Tech Dot in February for their concurrence or disagreement with is if there is 161-foot-deep crash zone under what weather conditions? And I asked for that concurrence, but for reasons of their own, Tech Dot refuses to do that analysis. And I will be reaching out to third-party engineering firms, bridge engineering firms to do that analysis for us. And that is what I'll bring to the city council. When, if they propose, and the decision the city council is going to have to make is based on a risk assessment. The risk associated with the bridge was, with that kind of a grade under the, you know, what weather conditions? Probability of the accidents that it will occur versus an at-grade design. So that'll be the primary question. So that'll be the primary question brought to the city council. And that's what will discern, will determine, is there a redesign or no redesign? That is the fundamental. Design component that will drive that topic.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
May I go back to the stop for a year and a half? Since one of the biggest point of contentions was the utilities, is it, as we're saying, we're going to stop for a year and a half completely? Or is there any idea or conversation going forth that does at least address the utilities?
Uh, yes, we're down to two telephone poles. Silly as that sounds, one of them is a Burlington, New York, Santa Fe phone pole that's carrying some service. And then BNSF is trying to determine what part it belongs to. Well, that's. That's bigger than the state of government or state of Texas, you know, government, you know, who does this belong to? I'm not making light of them, but it's not been an easy process. It's been a week by week by week, daily by daily. Process on these utilities. Uh, so that's where we are. The site that's out on Harmon Road. Just north of Hassett Parkway, the Tech Dot site. That happens to be the contractor's site where they stored materials. That's all been vacated. And Tech Dot is taking. Now, the materials out there, the City of Hassett purchased. And all the traffic equipment that's light, stanchions, signage. High, what is known as high value items are being transported to the Tech Dot yard. And Saginaw, it's south on one fifty-six on the right, if you, when you go through Blue Mountain. The City of Blue Mountain. So that's where they'll be taking there because that's a much more secure area. The remainders of it, we got an agenda item that we'll speak to later. With regard to storage. There's other things such as pipe and head walls and. Things of that nature that we'll be storing ourselves. So with that. FM one fifty-six. Has gotten a facelift. I so appreciate Tech Dot's work. Um, they have City of Hassett work with them and thanks to James and David Rogers. Uh, early on spoke with them and, and about the need of reworking all the. Side road and driveway transitions into FM one fifty-six. That was not part of the original project. It was just one fifty-six was going to get an overlay, do some repair work and get an overlay. But as you can see, most every road, side road. The approaches have been leveled out, the big bumps on it, Schoolhouse Road, which was not part of it, that's all been reworked. Uh, so my gratitude is to James and David and Tech Dot. Tech Docs have done, they've done a good job on that. Blue Mountain Road. Uh, there was three weeks of pain. But that. You know, our appreciation goes out to precinct three. Tarrant County Precinct Three for doing that work. They did a very fine job. Uh, striping will come in another week or two. Uh, the permanent striping right now, there's buttons out there, so we could just go ahead and open the road up. But that permanent striking will come within a week or two. Uh, on the north end of town, you haven't driven out is the Calhoun Hassett Road project. That's commenced. And you got a couple of items on the agenda to address about that. But is precinct three again. Uh, is out there clearing trees during the grubbing. And we're excited about that. And I'd like to make note, that's a month ahead of schedule. None of this was scheduled to start until December the second. But they're already out there. So precinct three is a great outfit. Have I missed anything on updates?
Not that I can think of.
All right then. Counsel, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do you have any questions or would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, I would like a motion.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is made to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, counsel. Item nine, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions and actions items. Nine A is discuss considering an act regarding the approval of an amendment to the Hassett zoning ordinance amending the table of accessory uses. And subsections. Four point three, six E and F. Mr. Schwenke.
Mayor Halsey and members of the council, I've got the control of the screen here, so I'm going to show you a few slides now. And this first one's on accessory structures and this is the existing chart right here. And I've sort of condensed it and put it on here so you can see the changes in, in red. The first change that we made at the very top is that we have. Allowed storm shelters to be put in any district instead of just residential. Then as you move down, there's a, there was a section that said accessory dwelling unit, primary structure. Well, accessory unit is not the primary structure. And so we actually struck it out of those two categories and we changed it to secondary that's in the agricultural. And then the next one is a residential garage detached. Over here in the. Old Town Core, there was a blank space there. Well, that basically said if it didn't have the P in there, you couldn't do that, that use. You couldn't have a, a garage. That was detached in the old town. And we have a couple of instances where. We have like a slab that is detached, which could have a potential garage pit on it and it'd allow other people to do the same thing. Down here, we also took the word residential out of the storage shed and also could have, there was a blank over here in the core. So we actually put that back in here and that's, but you could actually have a storage shed in the old town area. Moving on down, electrical vehicles, charging stations were allowed in. Commercial districts, but they were not allowed in residential districts. So if you wanted to put a charging station in at your house. It wasn't allowed use. So we actually put that in. And then we actually added over here, the, the planning and zoning commission noticed that it wasn't in the old town core area. So we put that in this one right here. The other one is the outdoor storage area, which was permitted by ride. And this changes all those permitted by rides to spatial use permits. And so instead of just allowing people to store stuff. Outside, we can actually control what it looks like, if it needs to have something done with it, you know, screen or whatever. In the, with a spatial use permit. And that's pretty much the, the changes on, on the chart. There was a couple of other ones that were in the written text, which had to do with the sizes of accessory structures. That's basically the accessory structure ordinance that is before you now is cleaning up this chart so that. Uh, we can do things in the old town area and also throughout the city where they should be allowed. Or not allowed in the case of the. Outside storage.
Mayor Halsey?
Yeah.
I did, Mr. Schwenke question, I see that you're removing the secondary structure dwelling for residents. Is there, you know, I see that we have resident pool house. But if someone were to try to put in a secondary structure, it'd have to be attached to their house now?
I'm, I'm actually going to let Mike Fedford address that. I'll go and say, take a question one more time.
I noticed on when you, we moved it from the primary structure to a secondary structure, we also removed the. Removed it from the resident one and resident two, so that they could not have a secondary structure on their property. So I was just curious, I know that down below you got the resident pool house, but some places may not have a pool house. They might just want to ask for a resident structure, secondary structure, but I don't, you know, are we removing that then and not allowing that?
I believe this would be the dwelling unit. You can have other accessory buildings, but not the dwelling unit, but bedroom. All the other facilities that makes a dwelling. You can't have that in the R one and R two, but I think it's still. Allowed in, is that, am I saying that right, Morse?
Yes, you are.
And that's being consistent with what we have in the past is not a. Second dwelling unit on the same property.
I, I've just seen some, and some of these pages, they're actually building mothers, you know, mother-in-law suites and that type of thing. And now you'd have to make that mother-in-law suite part of your house. Instead of a separate structure, I said.
Yeah, we used to. You, you couldn't have a secondary dwelling on any property, other, there, there's a provision in here that talks about you can have one that's. Uh, five hundred square feet or less, I believe. Was that, was that?
Say eight, eight hundred square feet.
It's eight hundred square feet now. Okay. So it's been increased to eight hundred square feet that you can have a secondary dwelling, but it's limited to eight hundred. Uh, is that, was that in all the?
Yes.
Zoning area, okay.
Is, is that covered on this sheet in any place?
It's not on the sheet. It's on, there's some text that follows this in, in the ordinance that, that covers that.
Do we have that text?
Yeah, we can. I'm going to let you take over again. And if you can pull up that ordinance.
Bring up the red line.
It's right after the chart. There you go.
So you want to walk us through this change that you have? I mean, I've reviewed this. E is. What we've had on the books and it is increasing. This is a dwelling unit over a garage. Uh, you can have a floor area of eight hundred square feet. It's been increased. It's been doubled in size from four hundred to eight hundred.
Yeah, but I noticed on, on paragraph F, which is the secondary, and that's what I'm questioning. It says the eight hundred, but it says it's removing it from residence.
Right. Michael? Mr. Schwenke?
I apologize. I wasn't at the P and Z meeting with Morse when they had the full blown discussion for this, so.
Is this a recommended P and Z item?
This was actually the ordinance that was. Taken to the, the planning and zoning commission was this ordinance here. If you have, you know, two dwelling units on the same lot, by definition, you have a duplex. And that's what we're trying to get away from is having two. Two units on, on a lot unless it's a, you know, pool house or. You know, apartment type thing above a garage, you know, for mother-in-law quarters.
And that's really what I'm asking. I'm just saying, are we taking that away from having a mother-in-law suite separate from dwelling?
So the answer is yes.
Yeah, you're, you're basically, okay.
Answer is yes, so that you don't have two dwelling units. In this case, they're not looking at. A garage unit, something over your garage. This is actual another dwelling unit. You got the one.
Correct. And, but, but I've seen houses that are even built right now this way, where they'll have like a little. Pergola over the top and then have a separate complete dwelling for a mother-in-law that gives them their own privacy. And that, and so we're basically saying we're not, we're not allowing that in the city.
And those are attached, aren't they?
No, that, all it is is a cover. That's, they're, they're not, they're not attached.
Have you approved such things as that? Two dwelling units, detached dwelling units on the same lot?
If it's not the definition of a dwelling, no, we have not. Definition of dwelling means eating, eating, cooking, sleeping, sanitation, living. If you take one of those away, you don't have a dwelling. Uh, that's how they, they've gotten away with it in the past. And we're just trying to strengthen that up a little bit. As far as. Uh, what I understand Morse has done here and it's trying to. Get more control over what we're allowing on the.
I just want him, so everyone to be, I want everyone to be aware, I want everyone to be aware that you're taking that away that will not be able to do that in Hassler without coming back and amending the ordinance again.
Or asking for a. For a, what's the word I'm looking for? Variance?
Again, if you, if you had an R one and R two, you're already having to get a permit, which is actually asking for the permission to do it.
But do you have objection to that?
I somewhat do, because I actually almost built a house that was going to be like that. I have my mother-in-law suite that it was completely separate. You know, I didn't do it, but.
What is trying to be avoided is two separate dwelling units are built on the same property.
Again, a duplex would be much larger than eight hundred.
Now, let me say, you can build. A structure. That's got a bedroom, it's got a living room. Dinner, whatever you have in it. And that's being increased from five hundred to eight hundred square feet. And cabinetry. As long as you don't put a stove top in there. That's not a kitchen. And you're, that by virtue of not putting a stove top, now that's what's been proved in the past.
But once again, that's again convincing a mother-in-law suite is usually you put all that in there so that they can maintain their. What, what, they can maintain themselves when you're bringing them in and that. And so again, all I'm saying is I, I will be against this. I will say that. I'll, I'll go against it, but.
Has anybody, are there any real live data points that would show any kind of. Violation or any kind of egregious nature of this happening within Hassle City limits that you guys have had to deal with? Or is this just a philosophical, theoretical, we're trying to prevent something that could happen? Or is this something that we're actually dealing with as a city and municipality that's becoming a problem?
Well, it's not philosophical and it's not a evasive problem.
If there's no data points, it's philosophical. Oh, I wasn't finished. If there's no data points, it wasn't philosophical. Please, sir, do.
Yes. You done?
And.
Very good. So we have dealt with. In the past, maybe two times over the last two years. I would expect.
So out of five thousand homes, we've dealt with this twice in two years. So once over a year's time. And we're going to change an ordinance that potentially, he's right. You know, the plus side to having multiple acre size lots is so you can potentially have a secondary home, that next gen. Formation that a lot of people do, you know, kind of go to taking care of their parents. I think it's worth, before we change an ordinance, at least review the data points. And make the most educated decision we can.
I might say we, we get inquiries. Probably weekly. Citizens homeowners, future homeowners, asking if they can actually build secondary homes on their properties. And we just haven't allowed that in the past. We don't allow anything. The secondary dwelling on your property unless it was under the five hundred square feet or less. Uh, so we do have a lot of people. Asking about it and inquiring, so.
What was the rationale to go from five hundred or four hundred to the eight hundred square feet?
That was a, that was a P and Z initiative.
It was, it was basically, yeah, it was. It threw a workshop, the, the planning and zoning commission recommended that. A number to be consistent with the, the numbers up above where the maximum size was eight hundred instead of having two different numbers. One of the problems in the future you will run into when you have a mother-in-law's quarters that's detached on a lot is. Sometime down the road, that mother-in-law is going to be gone. And now you have another residential use or a house there. And what do you do? Do you tear it down? Cause you don't have a mother-in-law living in, into it anymore. What do you do with it? Does it become a storage shed? Or what happens most of the time in a multitude of other cities, it becomes a residential rental property on a lot. Now, how do you police that? Well, it's hard to police, you know, you don't know who's living in there. You don't, you don't follow. The obituaries to see who's passed away. And so you end up with a rental house on a single family lot. And that's not a good situation. That's not what, what you really want in a, in a subdivision.
So we have to be mindful of. The future built out of Hassler. And what we allow today, you will live with for a long time. We have, uh, gone through, uh, instances of the, uh, renting of secondary units on the same lot. Um, and that's always been, the answer's been no. And so we're just trying to be consistent here. Uh, the why was the, at the very top line on F, why was the word primary struck out?
The reason why it was struck out is if it's a primary structure, it's not a necessary use.
That's right. So that was just a, I call it typographical, a Scribner's error that the primary was used. You only have one primary structure, that's your home. That's why that change was made.
Question, do we have any ordinances that would prevent such things such as Airbnb and short-term rentals like that?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Can you not tie this into a similar scenario situation? As far as, you know, stipulating that secondary dwellings such as this, you know, are prevented from being as that? Because, you know, in this, in the, the devil's advocate of your argument of if somebody dies and passes on, um, most children aren't going to take a dwelling of that size. What they're going to do is turn around and flip it and sell it. And that is a decent selling point that some people might want to buy to move into. Again, you know, a hazardous area with the bigger lots. Like we had the, the tiny quarter acre lots and trying to do this, it's a different scenario with tying the following, the duplexes, townhouses and things of that such, but you know, just looking at every side of the coin.
Yeah, that actually enhances, in my opinion, enhances the argument because yeah, I'm going to, if I got a, when I bring a unit on my property, I'll buy that. And there's no way that the city can really enforce that, you know? How do you, you check IDs, who's living there?
But I'll say this is that Haslett does have those smaller lots. In fact, we have lots much smaller than quarter acre. And that's in our new subdivisions.
I know, unfortunately.
So to answer that question, you know, not all lots are five acres.
No, that's, that's a good point too.
This is not discriminating on a lot size.
So remind me, what's the definition between R one and R two, resident one and resident two?
Our, uh, one is forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square foot lots and R two is twenty thousand square foot lots.
So if you were even to look at this and say, okay, I'll still allow it on R one, but not allow it on R two? It'd be on the larger lots?
You'll still have two basically primary residential structures on a, on a lot.
I, I understand and I, it's a good point of, you know, saying, so what are you going to do if the, the mother-in-law leaves? But again, I've seen many of these up in Justin. That's where we were actually going to build this type of unit that before they even got the mother-in-law suite, they treated it as a game room that had its own kitchen and everything over there and its own secondary structure and they, that. And then once the mother-in-law came in, they moved, let the mother-in-law come in. I, I think that there's, you know, you know, you don't, we have no way to control people renting out a room in their house to somebody else.
Sounds like council has a lot of questions about this. And, um, planning and code enforcement or, or building is not ready to answer. And, um, please, if you would, council, is submit your questions to me. And I'll ensure that the planning and building gets that and we take this up on, uh, December, I believe the, what is it? The ninth? It's just not ready. So, um.
Is there any time rush that you guys are needing to get this pushed forward, forward?
We do have, uh, some permits right now that are trying to be pulled for some, some of the other smaller items like storage in, in Old Town. We have a church up here that they want to install a, a storage building with our current ordinance, they can't because it doesn't allow it. That's one of the things that we're really trying to push for. But those are the, the first talking point that we've kind of started with all this. It's kind of evolved and everything else we're reading out, but the main thing is that.
Setbacks is what the main issue is, is this, and these are some cleanup items. I'll say that, that were secondary to the primary emphasis of this ordinance change. Do this for us, walk me through the rest of this that has changes. So I, where I've headed with this, council, you could approve this ordinance change excluding items. What was that, four point three? Four point three point six E and F. And go down to and brief us on what is the accessory uses, okay? Mr. Swanky, you want to go through this and tell us what this change is about?
Yeah, the, uh, first one is basically definition, just to make sure everybody understood, you know, it's not a primary, but a secondary, uh, use. And now the M section down there is we wanted to make sure that we changed the commercial and the residential to two different items because we don't want somebody having a house and have two or three electrical packs out there and charging other people's vehicles all the time because they don't want to install one themselves. So, you know, if you want to have a residential charging station at your house, you can do it, but not for the community. And that's the reason why we added that section in there.
Now, let me ask you this, on the side of, you know, approving the ordinance the way you guys are requesting, how hard would it be for someone in the insurance of Mr. Riggs said, to get a variance to be able to do what, you know, he would say for the purpose of putting elderly, you know, family or parents or somebody along those lines of? How, how difficult would we, would the burden be upon the citizens that live here to get that variance?
Well, the, the way that process works, they make applications, then it comes before this board and a decision is made.
Before the P and Z?
No, before the city council.
It would come before us?
Can you explain to him though, what the, what has to meet, what criteria to meet for us to approve the financial burden that, can you explain that?
Yeah, it's really not a financial burden. It's, it's yeah, it's, it's not a financial burden. It's, it's an unusual situation basically that is out of the norm. And in other law quarters would probably be out of, considered out of the norm.
Could you, could you scroll up just slightly on this page then though too, on the secondary dwelling?
Morse, would that require a board of adjustments there?
Yes.
A board of adjustments, would it require a board of adjustments there? If they wanted to do something that deviated from this ordinance in the past?
This zoning ordinance, it does take the board of, uh, adjustments. The board of adjustments is, is the city council wearing different hats?
Okay, that still leaves the power of the council.
Is, uh, by the individual, it's a.
I, what I would suggest, what I would suggest on this, if there is a problem, can you scroll up to right below the chart again? Right there is not approve at this time E and F and then change the chart by taking those two crossouts. If we can see the chart right there under accessory dwelling units, taking those off for the time being, then approve it, approve it like that. And then we can come back and revisit the rest of it, which I think that would take care of the hangups at this point.
Do you have your questions on the answer to the other items?
Again, I, if, I was perfectly happy if you wanted to approve the ordinance. I just wanted people to be aware that, and I was going to point out to paragraph G, you're actually calling it that secondary, you're calling it a grand flat or a mother-in-law suite. So, you know, that's, we have some conflicts in this document, so.
That's what I'm saying, take that out for right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be best right now because I think, you know, when you, when we're talking about this whole secondary structure, let's realize we're only talking eight hundred square feet. You're, you're not going to put a three-two structure in eight hundred square feet. So, you know, we need to be kind of in reality with what you can actually do with four walls and eight hundred square feet. I mean, it's, it's limited. So I, you know, I hear them talk about rentals and all that. And that's all speculation about what could be done beyond the original intent of it being built. But again, I get back, you know, just to the size of it alone really limits what a unit like that, what you could put in it and what it could be used for. But I really think we need to pull that, have P and Z go back, reevaluate and then bring something back to us.
All right, good, council, I make my recommendation, uh, that, uh, you approve this ordinance removing, uh, the items of, uh, six point three point six E and F and making the associated chart changes. They go correspond with that. Did I have a motion?
I'm not going to motion. I would like to make a motion to approve amending the Hasslet zoning ordinance with the removal of four point three point six E and F and changing the chart to reflect that.
Motion is made to approve, uh, ordinance, amending Hasslet zoning ordinance, which amends, uh, the table accessory uses, but removing subsections, the changes noted in subsection six, four point three six E and F and the associated, uh, accessory use tables reference. Is there a second?
Yes, mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Uh, council, I jumped the gun. We all did. But thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. I open this up for a public hearing. Is anyone like to speak to this item?
Sabre Smith, 300 Gamble Street. Um, I'm here to speak to this tonight because I was at P and Z and I was concerned about it at that time. Because as you heard Mike say, this is, this was initiated by folks coming forward in Old Town. And I think most of you guys live in neighborhoods that have HOAs. Well, you know, this is just my opinion, Ha- Old Town Hasslet is the Wild West. Anything goes up here because folks do what they want to do violating an ordinance. And then, then sometimes it just becomes a civil matter. And so as you guys approach these things, and I appreciate the discussion you had, y'all are sitting in the comfort of HOAs and I'm not. So stuff goes on here that shouldn't go on. There's a pool up there behind my yard on the property behind me that violates state law. Now, I don't know if it violates Hasslet, but you can't have an unprotected above ground pool with children around. But yet it's there, there's trees down, huge trees down, and yet it's there and nothing is done about it. So I get pretty wound up about it because I pay my taxes, just like you guys do. I just don't have the protection of an HOA. And we make ordinances where there's pretty lax enforcement of it. It's, it's a matter of whether they have time or they want to, or they lack you, or they just don't like you coming and saying things about it. And I'm not saying that about y'all. I'm just saying you have busy lives, you work. And this stuff, for the most part, gets ignored, uh, ignored. Now, if I come to the mayor about it, it doesn't. But I shouldn't have to do that, especially when it's a danger to children. But there's some folks here in Old Town that nothing gets done about what they do. They have trees downs, illegal pools. You know, things just are done because they know nothing's going to be done about it. So in my opinion, I live in the Wild West here in Old Town and I pay my taxes just like y'all do. I just don't have an HOA. So as you go forward and approve this, because y'all are pretty ready to do that, you know, I'm going to come back when I'm harmed with it because I've been harmed a lot. My property has been harmed. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, mayor, just for public record, like make notice, I, I do not live in a residential neighborhood that's governed by HOA, just for record. Thank you.
I'm saying I believe you all, but I don't know where you guys live. And I think a lot of you live in an HOA. So I don't, I don't know where all of you live.
Well, I would like to say whether you live in an HOA or not has no bearing on this ordinance, none. And, uh, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Smith. And the, uh, is there anyone online who would like to speak to this?
No one answered your question to speak.
Mr. Mayor, just to get on record, ma'am, in regards to your concerns that things are being not addressed.
Excuse me, Mr. Watson.
Excuse me.
Addressing.
To. My question's not to you, it's to her.
I understand, but you address the chair.
Mr. Mayor, may I please wipe my butt?
No, you're out of line, Mr. Watkins.
Why, I need to ask you to do that? Why don't you ask me?
I am.
Yes, ma'am, my, my concern is that you're saying codes not being in con- and I have a problem with that. So if they're not doing the job and enforcing the code of the city, then that's a, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Well, not many people.
Mr. Watkins, this is out of order.
Not many people.
Mr. Watkins, now I'll attribute to your inexperience, lack of knowledge, that you're out of order.
Sir, you can attribute to whatever you like. Welcome to the reality of Haslett.
No, it, the reality of Haslett, very good.
Today, yeah.
It's, uh, noted. So there is no other speakers online? None in the chambers? I close this public hearing. Council, you've already gone through a discussion consideration. Is there any further discussion? All right, so motion has been motioned and seconded to approve this ordinance removing subsections four point three six E and F and the associated changes in the table accessory use tables. And there, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. And so, uh, staff, Mr. Swanky, will prepare this and come back with the answers. And before, for the December ninth meeting.
Can I get clarification on who seconded the motion?
That was, uh, Mr. Hore.
Mr. Hore, okay.
Name B, discuss considering act regarding the approval of an amendment to the Hasslet zoning, of the amendment to the Hasslet zoning ordinance of Old Town District Standards, OTC, and Old Town Core, OTE, Old Town Expansion. First presentation, Mr. Swanky.
Yeah, Mayor Holsey and, and members of the council, I, I just do also want to run through a few slides on, on this. And the first one is really a Scribner's error, but we took care of it in this ordinance. If you look at all these letters here, when it was published, all the letters slid down. In other words, where it says, hey, the front yard is down here at the side yard. So we just took, took care of it. But that's really just a Scribner's error because our ordinance, when we sent it to them, was correct. But what we wanted to do is when we're looking at the Old Town originally, uh, when we prepared this ordinance, it was unique. There's a lot of really small lots in a lot of cases, and we wanted to address some of those things. And we made a couple diagrams and what the verbiage you see here in red actually refers back and clarifies what those images said. And if you look at this first one, the front yards, and this is taken directly from the ordinance, the minimum distance from the back of curb was 25 feet, while most setbacks are always from the property line. But in the Old Town area, since there's existing houses fairly close to the property lines and still enough distance from the curb, we made it reflect basically what you have down in the downtown to be consistent. And the same thing is true on the side yards where you have 15 foot to the property line from the curb, but five foot from the property line here and also a five foot here. Now, if you have garages, it was a little bit different. It was from the back of curb. So the back of curb, it was 20. So the back of curb, it was 20 foot to the garage. Instead of from the property line, because in some of these lots, if you go from the property line, you couldn't have a garage because the garage would be way back here in the corner or encroaching on the side yard, which is five foot. And so what the chart does, it refers back to those things. It says, basically, it's 25 foot from the back of curb and five foot from the property line for the front. And then it has the same type of notation for the side yard. And then there's also a note down here at the bottom that says, you know, number four, lodge, lot, garage, location options. And that's where you refer back to the garage options. And so it really will help out, you know, with the lot sizes that we have in the Old Town area, where the different things are located. Instead of, like I said, the normal in every other subdivision in town, everything is measured setback-wise from the property line. But these two charts were actually in the ordinance, and that's the way we wanted it to be. And so we added that red notes just to clarify what the intentions were. And we also did that for the Old Town Expansion, which basically did the same thing. It just went where we intended to. These charts were in the ordinance. They're currently in the ordinance. And we just made the red verbiage so it really agreed with what was going on, what the intent was.
And much of this change is being driven by the uniqueness of the Old Town Core lot sizes. They're long and narrow. But yet they still need garages. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue?
Sandra Smith, 300 Gamble Street, and more of the same. You know, I built my house in 1985. You know, I don't know if this change makes my property non-conforming if I choose to sell it. I mean, I need to know how this is going to impact me personally. You know, because these changes are done sometimes for one or two property owners, maybe even for a church, maybe even for the city, properties that the city owns. But I think sometimes you guys need to regard the people that have lived here a long time, you know, above some of that. So that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is anybody online who would like to speak?
No, sir.
There is no one online nor in the chambers, and I close this public hearing. All right, counsel, see you for discussion, consideration, and action. You have any questions?
I just have a question in regards to Mrs. Smith's comment. Isn't this grandfathered in if somebody has an existing property where you pass an ordinance and then they're outside of the ordinance, that their grandfather gave them, they don't have to do the corrections?
They'd be considered legal nonconforming uses.
What's, excuse me?
Legal, nonconforming uses.
Okay.
This ordinance here actually makes things more lenient than the
Than the existing.
Than the existing.
Okay, thank you.
So if someone goes to sell their home, how does that affect?
The legal nonconforming status goes with the property. It doesn't go by the ownership.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment of Hasslet zoning ordinance, the Old Town District Standards, OTC, Old Town Core, and OTE, Old Town Expansion.
Motion is made to approve amendment to the Hasslet zoning ordinance of the Old Town District Standards, OTC, Old Town Core, and OTE, Old Town Expansion. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. 9C, discuss consider act regarding application by QuickTrip for a master sign plan for 750 Harmon Road. Mr. Thadford.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This item before you tonight is, as Mayor said, this is a review and approval of a master sign plan. QuickTrip has submitted their application for master sign plan to evaluate for evaluation approval. The QT project site is previously approved by the City Council, located on the northwest corner of Harmon Road and Hasslet Parkway, also known as 750 Harmon Road. Section 4.04.08, a five of Hasslet City ordinances is the master sign plan. Master sign plan goal is to facilitate the permitting of signage that may be at a variance with the strict application of other sign regulations contained in the article, but still consistent with the purposes of the article, thereby allowing a developer sufficient flexibility to accomplish reasonable commercial goals while maintaining the quality of life for residents of the city of Hasslet. Application of the code permits the city to assess the entire proposed signage plan and take into consideration any and give variance to individual signs that may not meet the explicit requirements individually. So we have seven sign types that are being submitted to this plan. You do have a site plan there, all signage is depicted on that site plan. So we do have sign number one, sign number two, that these are the ones that are in question right now. Now, these are the ones that do not meet the explicit regulations with the sign ordinance. For sign number one, or SD2, CL60, the maximum sign area for the attached sign is .75 square feet for the width of the building or the lease space and not to exceed 400 square feet. The building is 93 feet in width. The maximum allowable calculated sign for permitted, size permitted for this size, for this side is 70 square feet. The proposed sign is 122 square feet, but is less than a maximum allowable or maximum 400 square feet that would be allowed. Proposed sign, sign size is QT company standard for all their stores that they have. Sign number two is a smaller size or just less than 20 square feet. They are, they would be on both sides of the primary sign on the front on the same wall section. The ordinance does not allow more than one attached sign per lease space on the front. And these are the two signs that are in question right now that they're asking for variance for. All their signs are within our allowable, is allowed by our code. I do, we do have folks here from QT. If I have any questions for them. If you have any questions for me, I'll have any questions you have.
So counsel, when you consider this item, should you approve the master sign plan, you are implicitly approving a variance. So this, so called variance is being mentioned here is not a separate item. That's the master sign plan approval built is, that is built in. So that's why it's considered as a master plan and whole. Any questions on that going forward? Do you understand that?
Mayor?
So, yes.
I'd also like to point out, can I have the screen again? I was provided this this afternoon. I think you probably got a copy of it too.
Yeah, I did.
And these are the QTs all around the area, and they have that same type of signage around there. So they're just showing that they're being consistent with, they're not asking for anything that they are all putting in elsewhere around the area.
Mayor Holsey? I guess I would have a question again. And I think we've discussed this before on some of these others where we've approved a variance on signage and everything too. Is there a reason that why we did this in our ordinance? Is it, or was it just someone felt that this was, that was the maximum we wanted to use or?
The ordinance is built to address signs individually and signs as a master sign plan package. And going if a shop or a business were coming in and asking for specific signage, already existing building of sorts, and then you would assess that sign for that unique building or whether it's an existing building or not. With a master sign plan, they can, they put the package together as a whole, which is all signage on the entire site. And you consider that as a whole.
So that's not quite my question though.
The ordinance addresses, lets you address individual signs as, but also as a package as a whole.
And that really wasn't my question, but the question is, is we've decided in our ordinance that we didn't want signs to be so large. Was there any backing behind that?
Those predate me. I don't know why those were put in there. I don't have any commentary to our ordinances of explaining why they were there. I just, I know they're there. Wish I had a better answer.
I believe you said that the biggest sign is under the 400 square foot. Is that correct?
Yeah, the biggest sign is Yeah, so the biggest sign is 922 square feet.
Which is less than the 400?
Right.
And Councilmember Ricketts, I just did a quick search. It looks like 2011 was our sign adoption. That's how long the ordinance has been there.
Well, just recently, didn't Main Freight come before us to ask for a variance in their sign to be a different size as well? And we turned them down from a standpoint of, you know, if we open that Pandora's box for one, then we do it for all. You know, to be consistent or to just bring up the, you know, appearance of consistency. At least to put that on the table for what we've done previously.
They brought in and they were submitting it as a work of art is what they were doing, something just very much different.
And if I recall, there's times like the entire side of a building and way over the ordinance. So this one actually, I've seen the QT signs and they're all pretty uniform and I'm okay with it. I think the, these guys were wanting to come in and do an entire wall with their, with their sign. So that's the reason why we did not approve.
And then the one main vertical sign, I believe, was 35 feet at the cap of it, how tall it is. And there's no variance for that, right? It's only the multiple signs in question.
Right. The large pile on sign outside is allowed.
Yeah, and just a little note on that, there is a high 35 overlay district, which allows a 35-foot high sign. 35-foot high signs are not allowed outside of that district. But this area is within that district, so it's not available.
Any questions? All right, counsel? Do we have a motion?
Mayor Holsey, I make a motion to approve the QuickTrip master sign plan as submitted.
Motion is made to approve the QuickTrip master sign plan as submitted. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. 9 Presentation on this, you can come on up, Mr. Mays. But this is, this is an annual agreement. This is the, I don't know how many we have approved in the past, but many years of it. This is where the Emergency Services District, it's not the county. It is an entity called Tarrant County Emergency Services District, number one, contract with the city of Hasslet for its fire department to provide emergency services, which is fire and first medical response to those certain areas in the county. And for that, they provide a payment to the city. And that payment has gone up. Would you scroll down? And right there, excuse me, right there, it's an increase, but the, it's $187,200. I think in the write-up is, it shows an increase, I believe, of $150,000 in your cover sheet to this agenda item. What is it?
Last year's was 156, and it's an increase of $31,000.
Right. Increase of $31,200. And also they supply two pieces of equipment, which is a brush truck and what other item?
The tanker.
The tanker, and also they have what is called a grant, but it's more than, it's almost like a pre-approved grant. We can apply, but we have to submit to be reimbursed for hoses, nozzles, and accessories such as that. So that is that agreement. This is the same as the previous years, except the reimbursement is gone up $31,200. Any questions on that?
Did we account for the increase of $31,000 in the budget?
No.
No, no. Came after?
Came after.
Okay. This came within weeks ago. Okay.
Chief May, do you always apply for the $25,000 reimbursed?
They ask us when they're doing the budget workshop. We know, we know we're going to get $25,000, and they give us four different categories and just tell them what you want. And then, once everything's all signed, usually by December, then that's when we can go purchase and then get reimbursed from that. So it's a pretty simple process. The ESD got a two-cent sales tax for all commercial sales in the county, and so that's increased their budget significantly. And so that's how they were able to give the 20% raise this year.
Any questions regarding this? If not, if I could have any further discussion, could I have a motion?
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tarrant County Emergency Services District, number one, TCESD Annual Agreement for Fire Services.
Motion is made to approve the Tarrant County Emergency Services District, number one, TCESD, number one, Annual Agreement for Fire Services. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. This item number nine, discuss consider an act on constructing Hasslet Parkway Material Storage Yard. This has all to do with XDOT terminating the, not terminating, but suspending the contract with Zachary and Zachary vacating that site. I've already discovered, I covered how the, have you clicked me? Sand light signage is being stored at the Saginaw Tech Park. And there are pipes and head walls and larger items like that that will be stored on our 78 acres. This has to do with constructing a 200 by 200 pad site and six-foot fencing with barbed wire and putting those materials inside that area to give it some secure area to deter it from walking off. But I've discovered this afternoon, even though the vendors providing pricing on this are quote unquote, pre-approved, that does not excuse us from having to go out getting bids because each item's over 50,000 dollars. So, uh, I'm taking this item off. You'll see, see it. Uh, if we can acquire those bids, uh, by the December 9th meeting, you'll see it again, but it'll be coming up.
Mayor Halsey, I did have one question about this. Um, is it, is, will it be a temporary location that, or is it going to be semi-permanent if it's approved?
It's temporary.
Okay. So the, the fencing can be moved, the, the surface, the gravel, it could all be moved?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor Halsey, do we know what the total value of the materials that are going to be stored here is?
Uh, yeah, I asked that question too. Would it be buyer keeper to buy all that stuff? Let it, let it walk off and buy all that stuff?
Sure. No, I was just curious.
As, uh, Mr. Rogers told me, there's some piping out there. It's well over several hundred thousand dollars and there's a lot of other materials. So that answer is a lot. Now, if TaxDOT needs to clear that site out sooner, they told me by the end of the month, we have already prepped a site out there and staked it off. And it's in the general location, uh, where you see the storage site here. We've, uh, prepped a site adjacent to it, to the east. As a laydown area for, uh, Zachary. Then we can come in and construct this and then come in and move all those materials into secure area. So that's our Plan B. So, but because of the bidding requirements, we're going to Plan B.
Question on the material, is it able to be, it's not going to be corrosive or anything for a year and a half suspended?
That's correct.
Okay.
Very much, uh, all in line with concrete or PVC type products. All right then, moving on to nine F, discuss considering act on approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Fort Worth and the city of Hasslet for city of Fort Worth cost participation in the Keller Hassett Road Extension Project. Counsel, you've seen these agreements in the past, but year, it goes back a year or two years. But this is, uh, the city of Fort Worth, uh, contributing 800,000 dollars to the Keller Hassett Road Project. That we put in escrow held by the city of Hasslet, administered, uh, the escrow is set up by, uh, Ms. Lamb. And, uh, will pay, uh, out of that fund, to pay for cost of constructions. Counsel, you have any other questions on this item? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
Uh, Mayor Halsey? I would, um, like to make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Fort Worth and the city of Hasslet for city of Fort Worth cost participation in the Keller Hassett Road Extension Project.
Motion is made to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Fort Worth, city of Hasslet, or city of Fort Worth call within the extension project. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Item 9G, discuss and consider an act on approving the developer agreement between Dollar Flowers and the city of Hasslet for developer cost participation for Hassett Road Extension Project. Likewise, this is the, uh, this is a public part, uh, partnership. This is the private side of it. The developer is, uh, contributing 600,000 dollars. 300,000 dollars will be here in the, um, near term, prior, you know, during construction, prior to construction, after the roadway as project, uh, is completed and accepted by the city. Then they will pay the other 300,000 dollars. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of construction contract, to approve the development agreement between Dollar Flowers and the city of Hasslet for developer cost participation in the Keller Hassett Road Extension Project.
Motion is made to approve the developer, development agreement between Dollar Flowers and the city of Hassett for developer cost participation in the Keller Hassett Road Extension. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, that's right. I do need a second. Thank you very much. Is there a second? There is a second. Ask Mr. Watkins.
Sorry, Doug.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Well, thank you, counsel. That wraps up all our contributions. The Tarrant County Bond, you've approved that interlocal agreement. The Tarrant County Precinct Three, you've approved that interlocal agreement for their construction. You've approved the city of Fort Worth in a local agreement. You've approved the developer agreement. We have all the funds. If you go out there and look, they're already working. So, thank you again. Uh, nine H, discuss considering act on award of construction contract to Level One Paving Incorporated for the FM 156 right-hand turn lane and Keller Hassett Extension Project. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Um, I'd like to ask the mayor a question. Mayor Carter, getting funding for a project, getting right way or, uh, all the agreements in place?
Say it again.
What's, what's more difficult, getting the right way, getting the funding or getting all the place for a project like this?
Uh, getting the, uh, right way.
So we embarked on this pro, project back in 2021.
Well, over three years ago, I stood out there and I go, why don't we build this road? Only thing in the way is a round bell. How hard can this be?
How hard could it be to build a road where there is no road? So, so what we have before you this evening is a, as a contractor for all the non-county construction items associated. What you see on the screen here, um, is a graphical depiction of those work-related items beginning over there where James Hand is on 156 with the construction of a southbound right-hand turn lane to facilitate those folks trying to head west. Um, you'll note that we had to add on to the pavement and then it's kind of hard to see, but we're also milling, overlaying and doing a bunch of reconfiguring of striping on 156 to allow for a left-hand turn as well. Then you'll see that the roadway section, which Tarrant County will be and is in the process of, which is flex base and then asphalt. They're going to storm drain pipes in. And basically, on this project will be completed by this contractor. Behind the county folks and do all the striping. We've got guardrails. We've got large cross culverts that need to go in. A lot of head walls, concrete work, concrete riprap. Um, and there's the median divider there at the intersection. Fencing, stormwater, reestablishment of grass, uh, just all the things that have to go into uh, the project that the county was, was not able to, um, take care of. So we put together a budget back in 2021. We've been working within the confines of that budget for the last three years. And we're happy to report that even after this taking three years, we had a good budget when we started. The contract, we're asking you to award tonight for 984,000 dollars and some change for level one. Um, is within our budget amount for the project. Also asking due to the fast-paced nature of this project, um, and the work that's being done out there, that you pre-authorize a contingency amount and then give us the ability to execute, uh, the necessary materials testing proposal. So we can make sure all these materials that the county folks are putting in are, are tested and meet the design requirements for the project. So, um, with the all-in amounts, um, requested in, in our letter, that's just before the bid tab here. As stated in your, your memo, we're, we're basically 1,132,603 dollars or 460,000 dollars under the budget for the project. So we have, uh, experience with level one. They, they had re, uh, recently completed the Ashmore Farms paving project that was done last, last year. That included all the rework of the subgrade in the failed areas as well as, uh, subcontracting out the seal code. Um, they did the 2015 Ashmore Farms project for us. They really like working in Hasslet apparently. Um, and they're excited to get going on this project. The mayor stated, the county is out there working diligently, a month ahead of schedule. Um, we rushed to get this thing out. We were happy. We got three bids. The bids are all in line. Felt good about the contractors. And these folks are set to mobilize on around December 3rd. Pipe is on its way from the plant down in Grand Prairie. Uh, the rest of the clearing and grubbing that the county folks are doing right now should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. We're working hand in hand with them to make sure that they're, because this is a bigger project for them. You know, they're used to coming in and rebuilding streets and having to deal with traffic, but I think they're enjoying the opportunity to work in a traffic-free area and help some of their younger guys learn the process of road building from storm drainage up. So I think it's, it's been a good project for everybody involved. And we respectfully request that you award this contract in accordance with our recommendation in our letter. Any questions, comments?
Mayor Halsey? Yes, I always do. Um, always when it comes down to proposals, because I look at proposals every single day. You have my other line of work. Yes. I always look, when I see a half a million dollar difference between two, what, what specs did we see when we looked at those proposals that showed that big of a difference?
Let's go to the bid tab, if you don't mind, James. That should be the next sheet. Maybe you can kind of zoom out just a little bit so we can look at the first two bidders. Fast fingers. He's gone. You're stuck, stuck in loot. Well, you got to sneak pre, peek at the plans. There were about 70 sheets of construction plans for the project. Lot of details, lot of, lot of text dot details on this one. And so to, to answer your question, if you look at the pay items, we have, we have 19, there we go. All right. We have 19 pay items or bid items that we established for the project. And each one of those, um, pay items has a, a technical specification that's either in the plans, it's in the general notes, or it's contained in our bid document. And that's either, um, a city, uh, technical requirement, a more central Texas council of government's requirement for text dot. Basically saying this particular work item generally consists of this, right? Uh, the furnishing and delivering of this and the installation in a manner consistent with, uh, this other subsection. So we've taken our plans, we've broken it down into 19 bid items. So we're not having to negotiate for any field changes due quantities and the like. Um, looking at the, at the two bids that we've got on the screen, um, we've got a bid for 984 and then JGO Public was 1.1. So I don't know what that delta is. That's 120,000. Which is, you know, that's, is that 10% roughly? Um, Sunmount, they were at 1.6. So there, I guess that's the 500. Is that correct, Mr. Ricketts?
Yeah, again, I would just look at the, the major drivers I see here is in your hydro seating. It looks like from, you know, level one, that's quite a bit lower than on the, on the hydro seating than the other two companies.
I don't know if his hydro seed sub owes him some money from another job. You know, I don't, I don't know. We, we, we do check to make sure that the unit prices are, don't appear to be imbalanced.
And it looks like the other big driver is the right-hand turn lane.
Yes, sir.
So.
And, and, and the county originally was going to construct that turn lane for us. We had every intention and they were prepared to do that. I said, let's, let's see what the bid shakes out. They could build it for 180,000 is what the materials were. These guys said they could build it for 172. So I, I would recommend we let these folks do it, keep the county out of the right of way and move forward. But that, those are two, two items that appear to be driving the cost of, yes, sir.
I just always try to look at that type of stuff to say what, what's missing or what, did someone just not understand the spec that you provided?
That, that happens. We'll get, we'll get requests for clarification. We, we take those and field those up to five days prior to the opening through an issuance of a formal addendum. And there were quite a few active, uh, requests on this project. It was pretty quick, pretty quick turnaround. We were in constant contact with all the folks, but I think level one just wanted a little bit more than, than some amount. Yes, sir.
So there, is there any reason why, you don't know why, especially item seven? When you said the city's calculated for 180,000, but you had two, three, 300 plus thousand.
We, we, we have not asked them, you know, I suspect maybe they put more of their money in the traffic control plan bid item, for instance.
But that was my question. Why do they need traffic control if there's not going to be traffic on it?
Well, there's, there's traffic control associated with the, with the turn lane. Yes, ma'am. We have a traffic control bid item for that. And then when we go to make the switch to do the connection over there at, uh, Keller Hassett, there will be traffic control necessary as we make that connection at the 90 and we construct that median. Yes, ma'am. So we tried to give two separate bid items so we can review two separate sets of plans and, uh, timing plans. But Mr. Watkins, I, I, it looks like they have more of their money in that particular item as opposed to the, to the turn lane and, um, uh, that's good for us because they're, we're paying that one by the month. So we get that done sooner than we're only paying for it by the month. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
All right.
I'm trying to remember what it was. Oh, you mentioned, um, a left-hand turn lane. So that's something that we're looking at is in the future, going northbound?
Mr. Tucker's going to pull up the exhibit. And I'll attempt to answer that. So it'll be striped for left-hand turn lane for northbound traffic as they approach that intersection. It's hard to see on that area. Um, but that, that whole intersection will, um, be milled and overlaid. We, we did complete a warrant, traffic warrant study for that for a traffic signal. And TechStots elected not to put that signal in at this time. So we, we agreed to do all the necessary intersection improvements associated with the future installation of that traffic signal. And that included the striping of a left-hand turn.
Mayor Halsey, because they, Text I did say they would provide the signal at one point. So they're saying they, they will, but not at this time.
That's correct.
That is, that is correct. And, uh, they will provide the all-a-signal equipment. Yes, but we are going ahead and instructing the entire intersection to receive as the spacing and the sites to receive all that equipment when TechStots decides they, uh, want to put it in. But item 156, for and after that intersection is being restripped.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of construction contract to Level One Paving Inc. for the FM 156 right-hand turn lane and Keller Hassett Extension Project.
Motion is made to award the contract to Level One Paving Inc. for the FM 156 right-hand turn lane Keller Hassett Extension. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second.
It is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Nine I, discuss considering an act to approve a resolution for casting votes for the Nine I, discuss, consider an act to approve a resolution for casting votes for the election of members to the current appraisal district board of directors. All right, council, you get, if we could. We must have this. End, December thirty-first. Actually, no, not December first, by December fifteenth. The term expires December thirty-first. But again, we must have our votes in by December fifteenth. And we have, you see the nominees. We previously nominated members and one of them is on there. But here are all those who are seeking your votes. We have a total of five votes. You can cast all five votes from one member or distribute however you like. I am going to make a recommendation for Mr. Gary Lasada. He has been very effective. The changes that have gone on at TAD have, are very much instrumental to his efforts. Thank you as well for Mr. Vince. He's been instrumental in TAD's direction. As well as Ms. Said. She was here and addressed the council. Both she and Mr. Lasada are the two members that, that exist in front of you that have actual ARD experience and a background, which is needed in this type of work. So my three recommendations are Mr. Lasada, Mr. Pointe, Ms. Said. Your votes can be distributed as you desire. And you can choose someone else, but we must vote on those members and how many votes they get.
Mayor Holsey, my recommendation would be two for Lasada, two for Said and one for Pointe. Mayor Holsey, I'll make a motion to appoint.
I would vote, yeah.
A motion to vote for Gary Lasada, two votes. Saidah Said, two votes. Vince Pointe, one vote. For the election of the members to the Territorial Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Motion is made for the Board of Directors, Territorial Appraisal District. Mr. Gary Lasada, two votes. Ms. Saidah Said, two votes. Mr. Vince Pointe, one vote. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous. They noted, Mr. Lasada, two votes. Ms. Said, two votes. Mr. Pointe, one vote. I know they all appreciate your votes. And we'll be sending out tomorrow morning to Territorial Appraisal District. Nine J, discuss, consider an act to appoint an applicant to serve as a member of the library board. We have two positions open on the library board. They're both alternate one and alternate two. Ms. Elizabeth Arnett is requesting to be appointed to place eight, alternate one.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Arnett to library board place eight, alternate one.
Motion is made to appoint Ms. Elizabeth Arnett to the library board place eight, alternate one position. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second.
There is a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Nine K, discuss, consider an act regarding approval of the twenty twenty-five insurance benefits for employees. Ms. Lamb?
Okay, this is the annual look at our health benefits for the employees. And we're getting ready for open enrollment. So the item before tonight is for insurance that will go into effect January one. And we've had some pretty good experience with our plans. Last couple of years, we haven't had a lot of major claims. And so our, on our health insurance coverage, we were recommending to remain with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas. And their renewal rates represent a one point nine percent increase in the overall premium to the city. The coverages basically for the employees are the same. They're, because they are considered as a, because we are considered as a small group. There are certain mandates from the state that required us to change just slightly some deductibles and some copays on the PPO plan only, but they were actually pretty minimal. But the coverages for the employees stay, stay the same. And these minor changes were, you know, not, not really seen as an impediment to the employee. And the increase for that piece of the insurance is nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. On the dental coverage, we're asking to remain with MetLife with a twelve percent increase. What's interesting about this is when we first went with MetLife, this would be the second renewal with MetLife. They had quite a significant decrease from the previous provider. And even with this twelve percent increase, we're still below what we were paying with the previous provider. And this increase in their, in their premium is three thousand, eighty-four hundred dollars, or three thousand, eighty-four dollars. And once again, this is, it's not any additional coverages. The coverages remain the same for the employee. Coverage for vision, life, long and short term disability, long-term care, COBRA and our health advocacy, which is like a teledoc type situation. They're all in a rate guarantee period and the providers have indicated no, no change in rates. So in looking at everything in the overall, the total increase is twelve thousand, seven hundred, sixty-five dollars. And when we were looking at this during the budget, we put increases in there because we do usually assume that we're going to have some increase. As I mentioned, they've not been, you know, horribly substantial in the last couple of years. And so this increase that we had in there versus what the increase that they're asking us to pay, we're still going to have a budget reduction of twelve thousand, four hundred and three dollars. These are the recommendations of our benefit broker hub. And looking at everything, it's staff and the mayor's recommendation that we ask for your approval for this.
All right, council, do you have any questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five insurance benefits for the employees.
Motion is made to approve the twenty twenty-five insurance benefits for the employees. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Act unanimous. Thank you, council. All right, council, item ten, executive session. The city council reserves the right to adjourn in the executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section five five one oh seven one of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, present to the, pursuant to the provision of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn its executive session in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one oh seven two. And this has to do with property exchange. And the time is eight fifty-two PM. I recess the open session and you'll meet me, so we can take a short break, say ten minutes. In the boardroom, then we will commence with the executive session. And in there, of course,
The time is 9:34. We have closed the executive session. We are reconvening for the open session at 9:34 p.m. All members of the council are present. Item 11, consider and take any action resulting from the executive session.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to allow the mayor to execute executive agreements with a title and appraisal company for up to $10,000 to be taken from the contingency account.
Motion made to authorize the mayor to execute agreements with the title company and appraisal company or not exceed $10,000 to be taken from contingency. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? There are another other items to take in consideration from the executive session, future agenda items. You see the list there, Council. More coming after that. We just haven't got it. Do you have anything you want on a future agenda item?
Mayor Holsey, I did, I don't, maybe just information. I noticed in our flyer that there is a haslet.org business directory. I just wanted information on that maybe at the next meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other? If not, adjourn.
Mayor Holsey, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Motion's made to adjourn. Is there a second? We stay here all night. There is a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.